Mr. Chairman, we're live.
Hey, welcome back, everybody in the audience and those on YouTube. We're at our eleven o'clock agenda item. Our Nixon is not an action item. This is Bill is the ground Scott. Come on up to the mic. And solid waste. What you got?
Well, it's our Baylor again.
No.
It's been down all last week. And still haven't got a solution, something with the hydraulic pump.
Can we get, I mean, is there like a lemon law? Can't we get another one?
That's what I was wondering about lemon laws.
I mean, it's crazy.
I've been talking with Aaron, who's their tech up there. And they've contracted, it's something with the hydraulic pump on it. Now Marathon, the manufacturer, can't decide whether they want to send the part to fix the pump or just send a whole new pump. You know, I have a call into Brandon, who's owner and who sold it to us. So, I mean, this thing's down more than our old one. We need to do something about it.
Yeah.
Because we've had to modify switches on it to make it work, two switches on it and other things, so.
The public is not happy.
But?
The public is not happy.
Yeah.
Our emails are getting it. Facebook's just crashing us.
Yeah. Anyway, so that's kind of where that's at. I know you were kind of questioning the tonnages. And why the fee went up. Well, Scott came in, we went eight, eight percent across the board on all our fees. Prior to two thousand twenty-three, he came in and Scott made his request. So that all went up, all the long haul went up, the waste operations went up. And they hauled three thousand more tons than they did the previous year. So that's why you're seeing that increase in, in, in the price.
Okay, so you feel that that's accurate?
Yeah, yeah, because I have, I have, I have all twelve claims last year. I added up all the tonnages. You know, like I said, I broke them out into where they went and but, you know, prior to two thousand twenty-three, you know, Scott came in because he hadn't asked anything during the COVID time. And we gave him eight point zero three percent or something and, um, and like I say, we only, the previous three years, we only hauled like fifteen thousand tons and that in two thousand twenty-three, they hauled eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighteen tons is what they hauled.
Last year was a bumper year for our county, for building, for everything.
Yeah.
Well, at the Hyden Hammerack, it was over thirty thousand tons, thirty-one thousand, I think.
Yes, so, um, they, um, that's kind of why we saw the increase from the previous years. They hauled more and then, like I say, it was across the board. You know, the fee for Clay Peak went up, the fee for, um,
You see that? That's, that's really gone up.
And, and then you see for every ton they haul out of there, they get their waste operation fee. It too, so to kind of get a true picture of how, how much it costs per ton, you've got to take each ton for Clay Peak or Adams County and add in the waste operation fee to that ton too. So that's, you know, kind of why we saw that jump last year. Wow. Um, other than that, um, uh, you know, we got, got DeeDee's office painted up there and her moved into her new office up at the annex and stuff. Things and, um, that, just working on trying to get my request for qualification for the, the, um, transfer station so we can get started on the refurbishing for that. And then my, um, request for proposal for painting and, uh, and, uh, other CIP projects right now.
What are you going to do at the transfer station?
We have, we have the refurbishing of that. We want to get started on.
Oh, the floor?
Well, it's, it, it involves the floor, the support framework around the doors that have been so badly damaged. Um, we need to get the trench drain in the center, um, when they do the floors, get it operational again so they can wash the floors down. And then we also need to extend the walls on the east and west sides so that trash doesn't go over them and we end up with all that garbage in between there.
What are you thinking that's going to run?
Oh, million and a half to two million. Hopefully by the time we're all set and done.
Probably. That's not adding on, that's just repairing.
That's, yeah, basically, yeah.
And we don't have that in that budget now.
Yeah, we do. It's, it's been, it's been appropriated and everything else in the capital improvement this year.
That's why we increased all of the commercial stuff.
And stuff, so trying to get started on that, so we're kind of getting that ball rolling because it'll, it'll probably be into, you know, the two thousand twen- you know, twenty-five year amount of work and trying. The big challenge is to keep it operational because the concrete work and stuff without having to tent things, trying to do it in the summer or busiest time of the year. That logistics is going to be.
That's what my question was.
Yeah, it's, it's going to, it's going to be a challenge.
Oh, my goodness.
Whatever Brandon does doing, it's going to have to be pretty well organized and have a good plan of attack that we can work on.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we budgeted three point one million.
Did we talk to once about doing a similar facility just to the east of that?
Adding another bay to it?
Another bay. I'm just wondering if, I don't know, I'm just throwing out ideas that maybe just do the floor and the walls and not put a roof on it. To the east, that'll give them someplace to move to while they repair the other one and then come back later on, put a roof over it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's going to be quite a project itself because you have that, that wall back there that's going to have to all be a retaining wall, you know.
Where the truck that semis drive underneath.
Yeah, where they come in at that lower elevation, basically where the building stops, the rest of that wall or that cut bank is just cut bank.
It's just cut bank, yeah.
It's going to have to, um, you know, have a pretty substantial retaining wall put up there.
But to me, it's, it makes sense to have two of those going at all times because I think the trash is going to get to that point where they're going to have to have two of them.
Yeah, I mean, but as long as, you know, the biggest problem we've had in the past is they don't, you know, they had trouble with trucks and employees. They seem to, as long as their trucks are going, like, you know, they said they bought two new trucks this year and they can keep employees. They keep up with it with no problem and stuff, but it is, as it grows, you're going to have to move that way. You know, they have all their fuel tanks and stuff right there, right now, we're going to, you know.
Yeah, that's right.
Contained and everything for their equipment. And that can, you know, that could actually go over on the west side possibly in that area between that and the shop and, um, and stuff there, but, uh, yeah, it's going to probably eventually reach the point where either you can have, the thing is, we don't want it left uncovered for very long because then you have to make sure every day that site is clear. You're going to have bears, birds and everything else. Stringing it all over, they do already, but and stuff, but yeah.
Hey, what else you got?
That's about it for right now.
Jeremy informed us that he's working on the thermostats.
Yeah, we, uh, got together and, and he's, uh, ordered the, uh, the equipment to get it done so we can, once he's got that and then, um, Sunbelt can come in and start doing their control work and stuff with them. But once he has the wifi up, then Sunbelt can come in and start doing thermostats, yeah.
And I think Scott, we need to start thinking about doing that at the community center because that power bill has gone through the roof.
Up there?
It was almost thirteen hundred bucks, I think, last month.
Do we pay that or does?
We pay that.
Yeah, well, you know, and this, I thought about Neil, those are three phase heaters in there. There's two of them in, there's, there's two electric units in there. And then I don't know, is that including the baseboard for the church now? Because they're keeping that warm now with.
Yeah, I'm assuming that's all part of it.
It's probably part of that because there's no forced air down there. It stops right where the bathrooms do. And then you've got all the baseboard and with that being used, you know, because they're having, they're having, you know, study, Bible studies and other things during the weekend there besides just the weekend, so they're, you know, in the past, they just warmed it up for bingo and then shut it back, you know, or they heated it up with the wood stove is what they did.
Yeah, but I'm thinking with the CDBG grant that if we get that grant, maybe part of it would be to modernize the thermostats. We know we're going to put in the duckless stuff.
Well, I, I wouldn't, is the, is that building crawl space full, filling?
Yep.
See, I would get rid of all those furnaces, baseboards are the worst.
They are the worst.
And put in gas-fired, you know, propane furnaces in there.
Yeah.
And it would cut our costs huge.
Do we have AC in there?
No, we don't. We, what, the one, one AC unit that is there is mounted high up in the wall, um, kind of on the north or the, the west, the southwest corner up there, kind of where, where the kitchen divider is and, and there, it sits up there in the wall. See, the thing of it is, we could put new furnaces in and then just run the lines right out to the west side there. Twenty-five feet and, and set, you know, it's easy because the forced air is on that. We want to see if the crawl actually extends to the north end of the building. You know, and look at, you know, having that forced air and get rid of the, um, baseboard.
Maybe that's something you guys can look into in your spare time is, see if you can get underneath that north part. I don't know when that was built. A long time ago. Sixties if I had to guess, but.
Because the crawl is under the, you know, under the hallway that goes to the bathroom in between. Because there's forced air in the bathrooms, but it stops right there when you go, um, and so you've got to see if there's a pony wall or something across there that you can't get across or that maybe has to have an access cut in it for duck work can go through. And, you know, put forced air into that end down there.
Be a whole lot more efficient.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, that can be part of the grant process too.
The thing of it, the thing of it is, the grant money can't be used for the church end of it.
At least in your center only.
No, for, for the portion that the church is using, the grant money can't be used for that portion of it. It can only be used, from my understanding, for the part that's the community senior standard portion.
We can boot the church back out for at the end of their contract.
Well, I tried to, you know, they do their foot clinic down there, so I was, I was trying to, you know, convince him that seniors still use it down there, but I guess we didn't buy it.
So this, is it, is the church renting it from us or are they renting it from the seniors?
From us.
From us.
I think, so this year anyway, it's only two hundred and fifty and we're going to spend that in a nanosecond on the south side of that building.
Yeah.
And then we'll just wait and see. I mean, we have an annual contract on that. So I, I don't know how it's all going to work moving forward, but those CDBG grants, the ones we're doing is two hundred and fifty thousand a year. So we just need to be more proactive about the project we're going to work on and see how it fits into within that substructures.
Because the bid we got for budget broke down everything in there. So then if we get the grant, then we can go and pick and choose which out of that bid we want to pursue, you know, with it this time.
This will be phase one. We'll have phase two next year. Yeah, so it's going to be an ongoing situation.
Well, and I think it's important for you guys to know too, that the church doesn't plan on being there forever. Their goal is to have their own facility as soon as possible.
Yeah. And another thing we really got to do is if withs is, or Adam, we've got to do something with the swamp cooler for the kitchen. We've got to get it back operational. As, um,
That's the one that almost fell through the roof.
Well, what it did, it leaked really bad and came, you know, and the water came back down the duck work, so we've got to basically replace that up there. And while we're doing that, redo the decking and the cricket and stuff they have laying on the roof up there, kind of sheds the snow.
Never ends. Hey, what else you got?
That's it. Unless you've got some other questions.
Or, um, so we're not going to be, no, that'd be for Brian. On a, perhaps for site people. Never mind.
We're doing that later.
Yeah, we're doing that later.
Yeah, it's at, um, eleven forty-five, half an hour from now. Hey, thanks Scott. Here, our next agenda item is not an action item. This is Roden Bridge. Jeff, come on up.
Not much going on besides waiting on Mother Nature to straighten her act up so we can actually start doing something.
It's pretty wet out there.
Snow last week was pretty slow going. Roads were mud. And plowed six, eight inches of snow off of them. Cruiser out. Hatching between storms. Track sealing. About all we can do. High Valley's kind of in hold right now until it dries up again a little bit where we can get trucks back over the top from Jim County. They helped, Jim County helped us, uh, do the really bad spot on the hill just off the valley floor two weeks ago. And three of their trucks and a, and my contractor up there had a loader and a road grader, so we got to pay for the material and then pay Jim County back for the trucks, but.
We haven't got that bill yet.
Nope, um, I'll keep you informed on that. This latest it's getting now, I don't know if I'll, if I can get them to help anymore, but my next plan is to watch ahead of time, get some trucks deplowed, ballast out, ready to haul and we'll just take them and leave them and pull it Jim County's little yard right there and we can just drive a pickup back and forth and in three or four days, we can have the worst spots done, but we're going to cause more damage right now.
Where do you get their material?
Right down at the bottom of the Ola Road, just barely up off the pavement. Um, I can't remember what name Jim County Superintendent called that.
Don't we have another pit? I know you can't get to it now, but in High Valley, south of Beals, isn't there another pit out there?
Uh, that was White's Pit and that's what we used to rebuild the High Valley Road twenty,
Yeah.
twenty or twenty-one years ago. With those loggers, we were basically down to the base rock. Because of all the traffic up there blowing all of our material off the road. Took me a while to figure out where all the mud came from. There's six inches of mud on that road while the logging trucks pumped all the fines up through the rocks. So it's still hard underneath. Five or six inches down, but they pumped all that mud up and. Yeah, so I'm another one I didn't have to plan on fixing this summer, but we're going to have to spend some time up there get some stuff done up there, probably a week's worth of hauling up there to fix some of these spots.
How do we hold those, how do we hold anybody accountable when they destroy a county road?
That was brought up a couple of weeks ago in here. It's like, there's nothing, there's nothing in place. I mean, I, I'm fighting them to even put dust abatement or water down on a road that goes in front of houses. We're going to, did you guys have the I, IDL guy come in here yet? Lucas? My DL, they're going to be logging up above Smith Fair or Round Valley.
Up on Bear Dome Road?
Coming down, no, they're coming through Round Valley, all the logging trucks. I told them, you guys need to get something in plan to put dust abatement down or water it. No, we don't do that.
Well, they will.
What do you mean you don't do that? Oh, we don't do that.
They used to.
So I, I said, I asked who, who do I need to talk to over you? And they said Scott Corkle. And he's going to tell me the same thing. I haven't called him yet, but.
Well, and it's not just the loggers. I mean, you look at some of the road guys, what they've done to our roads, line, some of those, we've got to figure out a way to.
I think wherever there's, wherever there's a pit, there should be some kind of a, it's no different than perpetual. Turn our road up, you know, you're going to, you're going to run this pit for twenty years. We need to figure out what that damage is going to be in twenty years and pull a bond or something or make you.
At least a bond and, and annual maintenance.
For any pits moving forward, we can put it as a condition of, you know, doing it, but these pre-existing pits, there's got to be something legally we can do. I think we need a workshop on this, Jeff.
That would be an oaky thing, but, yeah, I mean, you know, it's not all granite that getting blamed for Smiley and West Mountain. I mean, they're, they're selling to every contractor in this valley that are, they're running just as many trucks as Josh is. Plus the normal Joe Blow traffic that.
And then you talk about like cattle trucks that'll come in twice a year. And one day they're in and one day they're out. How do you do that?
I don't think cattle trucks, it seems like they come in when the roads are hard in the spring or in the early summer and they leave before they get soft. I mean, I.
Loggers are almost year round. I mean, they go way into.
Year round in certain places. Because there's certain sales that they have to be logged in the winter time. Because they don't want resource damage done by the skitters and so.
But they're destroying our roads.
And they're, I mean, if we wouldn't have had this January thaw, January, February thaw, they, they would have been out of there a month ago.
Well, they've got to have some kind of contract. I mean, they got to have some kind of accountability to the county to be able to run on our roads because they do.
Just like Sherry said, we need to sit down and butt our heads together and see if there's something we can do, but the thing is with these forest service sales where they're called stewardships now. They can't get sued calling them a stewardship. It's basically a thinning project of some sort, but it's still logging.
Still.
They'll run in ninety-six thousand pound trucks down our roads.
The logging trucks, they're gone before three or four in the morning. They've already come in and got their, so there's, as far as dust abatement, they're not creating the dust, but you're still impacting the road enough to where anybody else that's on that road is going to create the dust. It's a tough one to figure out.
It's tough and with our, I mean, the highway counts. I think, uh, Perry or somebody said two or three years ago, traffic counts on the highway were up thirty-five percent. Well, that's thirty-five percent more cars on our roads, thirty-five percent more wrecks, thirty-five percent more salt. It's just compounds and it's like, where do you, what do you do? Besides drop a gate down at banks and say, everybody go to Garden Valley.
It doesn't work either.
And Harry can flag them back on the highway.
So I, I hate to use these resource management plans so much, but that is, that's something we can do. Gravel roads, you know, have to be watered and dusted so many times per year.
Right.
If you have overuse, then, you know, I, we have to have some way that we can have a conversation about the fact that Valley County is absorbing the cost on all of this. The Forest Service needs to be helping with this expense when it's them or IDL or whoever is doing logging on these.
Private, whatever.
Yeah, it needs to be a part of their logging sale, but we get paid a portion of that.
Exactly.
And so maybe it's time, Jeff, to bring in both the Boise and the Pad and sit and have this conversation. You guys are doing sales, part of that stewardship needs to remain on, you know, the forest that it's coming from.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, in my mind, it's simple. You just add it to the contract cost.
Well, the guy that was, uh, sitting here, was he sitting here? Can't remember what me, he was bragging about they had done eight hundred, uh, log loads to the mills and I'm going.
That's awesome, but.
That's awesome, but that's eight hundred logging loads that are going down our roads. That's a lot.
I mean, not much weight, even our dump trucks, you know, we, speed limit's thirty-five on gravel roads. We try to water in front of the houses. But there's some times we can't. I tell the trucks slow down at ten miles an hour and they be yelling, scream at me and this and that and it's like, you're not sitting in that house.
Right.
I mean.
I think it might behooves to, to talk to Scott Corkle from the state because I think most of the logging now has happened on state and private. There's not much going on on national forests.
Forest service sale way back in Patty Flat this winter. They shut him down during that warm spell. And all he's done, complained about how rough the road was all winter and wanting me to go fix it and it's like, oh.
That road is rough.
But there is private sales and, you know.
Well, and see if, what, if there's something they could do on their side. Make it a, let's try and fork out the problem and not start throwing fingers at each other.
And DF, you know, a lot of people don't like them, but they were the easiest ones to get along with, with, hey, can you get some dust abatement down or water truck? Yeah, no problem. Boom, they did it.
They know how to take care of it, you know. People don't like them, but they, they maintain their properties.
I'm all for logging, but we're getting my, besides my roads getting beat up, we're taking hundreds of phone calls a summer that, about the dust and, you know, hauling out of, hauling up Smiley out of that rock pit, same thing. People complaining about the dust and.
It's costing the county taxpayers money and, you know, that's bottom line right there, you know, it's.
It's more grading for us.
Yeah.
More of this, more of that, more adding gravel. It's, it's a compounded cost that I think it's a good idea to nail this thing down.
I wonder if we could do something like we do with developers where there's an agreement on a logging job.
The one thing I don't want them to do is blade my roads.
Yeah. Or, you know, make chlorated or water, whatever they can.
But if they give us a chunk of money out of that to.
You don't have time to do that.
Blade it, I mean, blading it is, I don't want loggers blading my roads because they just take everything and push it off in the ditch.
Well, I think it's something we need to work on somehow. I'll, I'll see if I can get hold of Scott and get his input on it, Scott Corkle, and see if there's a way that we can work on this.
I think Lucas got ahold of Doug and got on the agenda, I thought.
Yeah, I'm looking for that right now, Jeff, to see when we schedule it.
So Jeff, it should be coming up here pretty quick.
If we farmed out, I mean, if, you don't have time to fix those roads that.
No.
And you farm that out not to loggers, but to the contractors that are here in the area that.
Two thousand dollars a mile.
That they know how to.
Yeah.
Do that. See, and that's, that kind of money just needs to be put into contract and say, you know, you guys need to be willing to do this.
The only, so the only hesitation I have with that is they're the ones destroying. So if they're going to be paid to fix it.
I'm talking about contractors. He knows contractors I'm talking about. I'm not talking about logging contractors.
No, I mean, the other contractors are using their belly dumps and everything else on our roads to actually go and work on the other roads in the county that they have. So, I mean, they're the ones that are actually destroying, in my opinion, more than logging trucks are. I mean, Smiley, Sheline, all those guys are coming out of that pit in McCall and they're absolutely destroying our roads. So if they're going to be contracted to fix it, where is the motivation to try and protect it at all?
Right. Pay McCall.
We got to.
Most of that material heading up West Mountain on the pavement was going for the city of McCall work.
Yeah.
So, who, who do you make? Yeah, I, I think definitely we need to sit down and
There needs to be.
If we can figure out something. If there is even legally, we can do something, but.
It's got to be, got to be some way to.
Are those pits already exist? Like you said, it's might be a little tough, but.
Well, I think, you know, the worst case scenario is you shut them down because the road's too soft right now. You can't haul anything, period, on our road.
Somebody just hauled in about four or five truckloads of recycled asphalt down here to the old recycle place down by our shop sometime this morning.
What's that for?
I don't know. Try to fix front street there between our shop and the post office. I don't know.
Well, and that's our road, isn't it? Down to Mill Street?
It's e- even front street all the way into our yards, city.
That's city. On the other side of the tracks, it's ours.
Yes.
So are we going to get pushed back the same way that another contractor would? Because we've got trucks out there also. You know, so I mean, it's a really difficult conversation and it's.
I mean, yeah, that's just it. It's like.
Like, yeah, where do you, where do you hold the line accountable?
Yeah.
Again, we're going to have to go back and have a levy conversation because it's, at the end of the day, we're going to have to use taxpayer funds to fix our roads because everybody that's on them, how do you hold one accountable more than another accountable? That's not, you know, that's almost a takings. If you charge somebody money that you're not charging everybody.
Yeah, I mean, what about these pickups that have two quarter firewood on them?
Yeah.
On a, on a tire that wide, they're doing just as much damage as a sixty-five thousand pound dump truck.
Every contractor has a trailer in back of it that jumps all over the place.
Yeah, I don't know. It's, we're outgrowing our britches, I think.
It's growing pains is what it is.
Yes.
Well, it's not. It's, unfortunately, it's because the county has never, you know, used taxpayer funds. We've always relied on outside resources that are drying up. And so, I mean, basically, it's time to look at our entire program when it comes to roads and how we're going to fund it.
Yeah. Yeah. So one last thing, we're.
Phil's going to take this before he retires and.
So we pulled some soil samples out of Gold Dust where the new shop's going to go and it didn't meet compaction levels. So there's three different options and one of the options we'll take care of in our slow time here in another month. Basically got to dig out five feet in the bottom of the footings, which puts us about eight foot deep for the whole area of the shop and import material in.
And that's probably the salt?
Uh, it'll probably be out of our Lake Fork pit.
And compact all of it.
About nine thousand tons.
Oh, yeah. Oh, my goodness.
But we'll take that material and use it on our roads, so we'll kind of kill two birds with one stone there, but, yeah, I just came across Friday afternoon and we're looking at two or three different options, but that's, that option there, I can have four or five of my guys working on during mud season. Get a dugout and.
The material is usable that you pull out of.
Oh, yeah, we'll put it on one of our roads.
And then it won't come back.
Huh? Oh, yeah. Yeah. So that's, that's where we're at on that. CUP meetings Monday, Thursday nights, sometime or another. I'll be here with the lands group to present that.
Good, I was going to ask you if you're going to show.
Might be late for work the next day if it happens at eleven o'clock at night, but.
At ten o'clock, they usually shut her down.
Hope it happens at eleven and not push it to April.
Yeah, that's very true. I'll, I'll make it happen. Other than that, we did lose a. Other than that, we did lose a, lost a high pressure, high pressure fuel pump on one of our oldest cat road graders and in turn it took out the motor. For about forty thousand dollars.
We melted pistons?
Huh?
Did melt pistons or blow on the top of the pistons?
Um, it just, we've got metal all over in the engine.
Oh, ground metal.
It, it blew the side out of, we don't even know how it got from Howdy's to our shop. I mean, it's got a hole bloating the side of the high pressure fuel pump which in turn seized that up, which ate the gears off of the pump out here and all those fine metals are, instead of taking a chance of rebuilding that one, we're just putting a new pressure pump on it, firing it up and going. It's gonna bite the bullet and put a new motor in it.
New motor, yep.
It's forty thousand, but it's like a eleven thousand dollar cord charge or something like that on the other one.
So give you something for the cord.
Cat is working on that because they've had this issue on more than just ours. But we might be able to get a little, a little bit of help or full help, I don't know. They're working on it.
Just in the loop on that one, but that happens.
Huh?
That happens with a lot of engines.
Yeah, cause they, we've been watching, that has, we do the oil samples on it every two hundred and fifty hours. And they've been watching, we've been watching this high iron in the oil. What do you do? Yeah, oh, high oil, hi- high iron, uh, what do you do? Doesn't tell you where it's coming from. So everybody's been known that this motor's been having an issue for about a year and a half.
So they know there's an issue with their product.
So.
Wow.
Do you have any updates on the accident that happened?
Uh, Western States came up and spent pretty much all day on that road grader, testing everything, testing hydraulics, testing switches, turned out good on their end. I sat in that machine, Stretch sat in that machine and you cannot accidentally hit that lever over here and make the wing go down. If you, if you bump it, it's just gonna go and stop. We don't know what happened. I mean, for the operator to, literally, you have to reach over this plastic guard, grab that joystick and physically move it and as soon as you let go, it goes right back to center and stops. We, we don't know. I'm just.
Do you happen to put the safety chain on when they come through down?
That's what, that's what he's doing now. Whenever he gets on the highway, he stops, get out, hooks that safety cable up, but like me, I was showing Western States some things on it Friday, they were up and sitting there going, why won't the damn wing go down? I looked back and the cable was hooked up. So somebody's gonna forget it's hooked up and they're gonna rip the cylinder off.
Oh.
It's.
Each operator should know that, but.
Should, but we never use them.
Yeah.
This is one of our nightmares, including mine, running a road grader is coming through town with that wing on. Like, what if that pin breaks? What if the hydraulics fail? What if, well, it happened.
How many vehicles did it get?
Four count in the mirror in front of D nine. Which is nothing, I mean, that's pretty cheap, but it did quite a bit of damage to the other three.
In front of the D nine, I heard it was in front of grandma's.
It was right here, that's where the three cars were hit, but he took the mirror off of a pickup in front of D nine.
So it was still down at D nine?
Was the wing down or was he just too close to the car and the, with the wing being upright, he just, he just barely clipped it. Didn't even break the mirror off the car, it just broke the two top bolts off and mirror was still hanging there.
Did he not realize the wing was down? I'm confused. That's a long way.
I mean, if you're traveling at twenty-five, twenty-six miles an hour and that wing starts coming down, you're, you should notice it, but you gotta kind of physically.
The wing goes out, what, six feet?
Uh, about ten.
Ten feet?
Yeah. Twelve foot wing and, yeah, but with it angled back at thirty degrees, you're probably ten foot.
Man, he would've tore up everything if that thing was all the way down.
I talked to the people in Domination Fitness that, and the young lady was just so thankful, cause twenty minutes before that, she was unloading her kid from that side of the car.
We're, we're very blessed on my.
Glad nobody was hurt. I, I don't have an answer for it. Western States doesn't, my operator doesn't, it just, we don't know, I mean, I, me and Stretch, just, we didn't get much sleep that night, just going over those thousands of scenarios on. Did he hit that patch out here in front of where the new pharmacy is? Those graders bounced, cause there's big tires on it, did that trigger something to, we don't know.
And there was another accident with one of our plows?
What's that?
There was another accident with one of the plows?
Uh, we've had about four of them this year.
Any damage that, you know, we need to.
No, no damage to our plows, it did a lot of damage to the contractor service truck on Gold Dust. Had a guy run into the back of our sander on the S bridge, no damage, it, something we, we fixed, uh, another one, there was another one that, oh, we just had an accident there Wednesday?
Somebody turning left?
Out here at Goslin? Yeah, the guy just, and he listened to me, I, I go, what, what did you do? And he goes, well, before I got on the highway, I got off, brushed all the snow off my taillights, blinkers, and he goes, I seen this pickup way back there and turned my blinker on and started to turn and looked over and there he was and luckily I pulled back to the right, otherwise he would've T-boned me. No damage to our plow again, but it did a lot of damage to that pickup and trailer.
People are just impatient out there.
We're right, right in line with ITD. What are we, fifteen this year for ITD?
Yeah, roughly.
Fifteen plow strikes? We had seventeen last year, I think, and it's.
Wow.
People running into the back of them, they're not running into the front of them unless they run into Harry up here on Little Donner, but um, they're running into their wings, they're passing them on the right, they're running into the back of them.
Oh, there was a, we were coming from council yesterday and you got in the passing lane, lady went around these people on the right, faces, look, look at what.
Down there on Fort Hall Hill?
Yeah. Just pass them on the right instead of.
Wow.
Everybody's in a hurry.
People are very impatient right now.
They're terrible.
And construction crews, Harry probably vouch for it, you, you watch your back when you're out there, even on our little side roads, cause people are not paying attention. They just aren't paying attention, that's all there is to it.
Nuts. And unfortunately, that's not gonna get better either with thirty-five percent increase in the traffic on our roads, so.
And that was four years ago, so what have we gone up in the last three or two years? Every year it gets busier, so I bet we're.
So Jeff, that's one of the things that we would like to get from you. What is your list of top priorities? Then a second question for you is, I mean, first of all, we should be following the plan that we just got. And I never really thought about this, but, you know, how many people actually live on each one of those roads? So some of the roads are bad, but there's five people that live on it versus maybe a road, you know, is, is getting there is not the, you know, it's number eleven priority, but there's a thousand people that live on it.
Right.
So how do we balance that? So are you working on your plan this year?
I've changed it three times already.
Okay, well. And maybe think about how many people live on it?
Right.
But I'd really like to see a top ten from you from this year, so we know what your plan is. We're gonna spend time.
Sweet talk this guy at two o'clock to help me.
We're gonna try, but. And have his, you know, whoever it is, whoever gets started is gonna have a big load to start with.
I had about twenty on my top list three months ago and went back and took ten of those off and added four of these other ones and just every time I turn around, there's another road that's just flat blowing up.
Yeah, I don't know how you can even start to make a list now, you don't know what spring breakups.
I'm trying to do what you guys have wanted and it, get my list, it's like, oh, cool, and the following week, start getting calls out around Valley and I drive down there and it's like, oh my God, what the heck happened down here? Yeah, it, it, main roads are my priority. But, you know, it's also EMS, I mean, Thunder City only had ten people living out there, but garbage trucks couldn't get out there, ambulances couldn't get out there, fire trucks couldn't get out there and same on Sixty Lane, it's. But, once again, when people call and say, well, my property taxes and road department and it's.
No, those two things don't equate, but, and also, you buy a house at the end of a dirt road, especially in this kind of a country, there's going to be an expectation, it's not gonna be met. But, you know, that's, that's, I mean, Thunder City was, was a question to me because there was only ten people living on it. And some of the other ones that are really blowing up, there's a lot more people.
Yep.
That.
Most of these blew up this winter.
Yeah, it's been a rough winter.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm working on a new list.
Well, just keep us informed with what you've got going on, so we kinda know what to expect.
Right. Yeah, I'm trying to figure out if we do go out for a levy again on how much, I can look at on how much we spent on paving and how much I'm gonna spend on chip sealing this year. I'm starting to get a good cost on what it costs to rebuild a mile of road. So I'm coming up with a dollar amount in my head on what we could ask for.
Well, we're getting one last SRS payment.
That's it.
In May or June. There's nothing been reallocated and now it looks like potentially, we won't know until October, November. So you're gonna have to budget for next year based on zero.
I'm already working on it. I think you gave me that heads up a couple of months ago or a month ago or something, so, yeah, I'm just kinda reworking everything.
Cool.
Hey.
Okay, well, let us know we can help you with that.
Have we gotten our check yet from the state on FEMA?
No, should be showing up here sometime. So keep your eye open on that, Doug. Cause they're probably just gonna, it's gonna be a, I don't, I don't even know who it's coming from, if it's gonna be FEMA or USDA or it's gonna be big, I mean, we, we get these USC, USDA checks in all the time, well, I have some, Steve has some, Larry has some. I show up in Doug's office, everybody's going, who's this? There's no paper attached to it. We gotta go back and search that dollar amount, cause there's no agreement number attached to it, it's a check.
Good accounting.
You need my account number.
And we all fight out over whose check it is.
What kind of, oh, that's US government for you.
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
That's it, thank you.
Have a good day, Jeff.
Hey, we're gonna move on down to our agenda, our next action, these are all action items under commissioner discussion. First one is the meeting minutes of February twenty-sixth and March fourth, you guys need a motion to approve those, if there's no corrections.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of February twenty-sixth and March fourth.
Second, move to second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, our next agenda item is also an action item, this is approval for inspection of the mayor title building.
I have McCall Home inspections that are coming out tomorrow. He charges twenty cents a square foot on a commercial property and it's a thirteen thousand square foot building, so that bill will be twenty-six hundred dollars.
How many?
Twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six hundred, okay.
So I have an inspection agreement that I need to go ahead and sign and wanted approval to do that before I sign, but he will be tomorrow and then Oki is gonna, no.
Okay.
Electronic form, so I couldn't include that. So we will get a full report afterwards and he takes photos of everything, everything he looks at, there will be documented evidence in a packet that we will get. He does, um, it's a full inspection report, I've used him for home building stuff for years, he's very thorough.
And we're not, we're not splitting out with the mayor title people, we are.
This is a buyer's request.
This is just us, okay.
Do you need to coordinate with Wes on that?
I'm sorry?
We need to coordinate with Wes on that inspection.
Okay.
Is he flexible in the time that he can?
I think it's scheduled for tomorrow at eleven.
Oh. The, the agreement we had was, Wes would be, uh, given the option to be present and also to talk to the tenants before.
I will email him in just a second and let him know. I think you sent it to me with something, with, I think it's on the purchase and sale.
And Oak, was it you saying that the guy that installed the original heating system is gonna look at that?
Yeah, I, maybe we'll get in touch with him.
I think that if there's a cost of that, we should probably think about that as well. Cause he knows more about that building than probably anybody else. So you need a motion to approve this inspection, what was the name of the company?
It is McCall Home Inspections, Matt Merlino.
We're just doing an approval for right now?
Correct.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the inspection on the mayor title building with Matt, uh.
Merlino?
Merlino.
M E R L I N O, McCall Home Inspections.
Uh, do you wanna put the amount down on the?
Twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six hundred.
I'll second that.
Um, hey, we got a motion to second to approve the McCall home inspection contract, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. You had, you said you had something there to sign?
It's actually, it's an electronic signature.
So why don't you amend your motion that you're authorized to sign that? I don't need to sign it.
Would you amend?
Yes.
Amend your motion that I'm allowed to sign electronically?
Yep, so, so moved.
Oh, we'll second the amendment.
Hey, we got a motion second on the amendment to authorize Commissioner Mopin to sign the contract, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next agenda item is to approve a letter to Lake Shore Disposal regarding their request for a solid rate adjustment. And all I can say is whoever wrote this did a really nice job. Said everything I wanted to say.
That would be Miss Oki.
There's a lot, a lot of input from.
Oh, okay.
The good people who work here, but that's.
The good people? So I'm gonna make the motion that we approve the letter to Lake Shore Disposal regarding their request for a rate increase.
Second.
Move to second, all in favor, before we vote, Brian Newton, nothing else to add? Okay. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And we all three sign this, I believe?
Before you leave for lunch, Brian, I, I need to show you something on here that got sent to me.
Hey, our next agenda item is also an action item, this is the signed Sampson Trail Pathways contract with Faalvi Earthworks, Dave, come on up. And I'll be honest with you, I haven't a chance to look at this one. So this is around two hundred thousand?
It came in at three hundred and eleven thousand after many design revisions. Uh, so yeah, this is pretty straightforward, this has been almost two years in the making. If you look at the dollar amount, uh, the county has a grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we got and Valley County Pathways is picking up sixty-two thousand dollars worth of the bill.
Oh, wow.
They also paid for the design on this project, which was just about thirty thousand dollars.
That's awesome.
So this will be for the first phase only. We applied for a second grant to cover the second phase because the costs were just about double what we thought for the two and a half miles.
So this being over fifty thousand, you did go out with an RP?
We did, we did an RFQ through the.
RFQ, did anybody else bid on it?
No.
This gets us to Sampson, or to Elo Road?
Yeah, it's basically Dyne Hard to Elo. And then we, hopefully we'll get the same grant for next year for Elo to Pearson.
That'd be awesome.
Good job, this is exciting.
Been a group effort.
Very exciting.
A lot of work and a lot of time, but yeah, great job.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was a little frustrated it took so long, but I, I gotta say, like, after talking to people about putting similar projects together, two years seems pretty reasonable. Doug's gonna be happy to get it off his budget.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve Sampson Trail contract.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Sampson Trail Pathways contract on S with Faalvi, okay?
Hey, do I have a second?
I did second, yep.
Well, you did. Motion to second to approve the Faalvi contract for Sampson Trail Pathways, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We all three sign this one.
Yep, I need Doug to attest it as well. Uh, we are gonna have another, uh, open house, I think it's April twenty-second or right around there. Chat with folks and just tell them where we are and everybody get updated before we start building anything.
So then phase two is gonna go Elo south?
Yes.
How far is that gonna go to Rogers?
Pearson?
Pearson.
That's, basically we broke it into two one point one mile chunks.
Elo to Pearson.
So how's that work, Dave, on, um, you having to get easements or whatever from the owners of the property as you're going by it? Do they have to give you guys X amount of property for?
Um, we had just about twelve feet from the edge of the pavement in our easement to play with and that is inclusive of pathways.
So we still have that in there?
Right, so we stayed in that piece of our county easement. And then where we needed to go around an obstacle, if it was a big tree or something, we talked to the landowners and we actually. And then where we needed to go around an obstacle, if it was a big tree or something, we talked to the landowners and we actually got other agreements in place um, with a couple of the landowners to go onto their property for short distances.
Good.
Dave, uh, did you ever get your rock source figured out? As far as getting your stuff from the county borrow?
Material wise, we're, we, we were allotted material from that asphalt, crushed asphalt that we have stored down at Wellington.
Oh, okay, that's where you're gonna get it from. Because Jeff just let us know too that they're gonna dig out where the new county shop's gonna go, and that's just road mix. So there may be some of that material too that you, if you can use it, would be available.
Um, you know, Valley County Pathways is still gonna be looking for some material, it sounds like, for the Donley Flyway project because of the good pit and all of the stuff that came out from that. So that might be a source of material for them.
Yeah, good. Okay, anything else?
Will you let Jeff know that? Will you let Jeff know that?
Uh, we've talked about it. Thanks.
Hey, there being no other business on the morning agenda, we are gonna recess for lunch and we'll see everyone back here one o'clock.